Okay. To get started here, I'd like to welcome everyone to our, I'd like to call, call to order, the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 25th, 2023. Before we get started, I just wanted to welcome Andrew Jansen, who is our new, what's your official title?
Planning technician.
Planning technician, and I don't, we didn't introduce you last time, but just wanted to welcome you. Let's see, the first order of business today is the approval of the September 13th, 2023 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept them.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next order of business is the following new business where we will consider the petition of Diamond Hill Baptist Church for a conditional use permit in an R2 low, medium-density residential district to allow the use of an existing structure as a childcare facility at 805 15th Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of Planning Commission. As you said, this purpose of this petition is to allow the use of the existing structure at 805 15th Street as a childcare center. The subject property at 805 15th Street contains approximately forty-three hundredths of an acre, the entire Diamond Hill Baptist Church campus, including this property and nine additional adjoining properties, is approximately two and twenty-five hundredths acres. The comprehensive plan recommends a traditional residential use for the subject property. Traditional residential areas include our older neighborhoods, generally built before World War II and before the city was zoned. The city's historic districts are located in these areas. Public and private institutional uses are appropriate when they are designed to blend into the existing urban fabric. The property is zoned R2, low-medium-density residential district. Childcare facilities are permitted in this district upon approval of a CUP by City Council. The subject property contains a two-story wood-framed brick veneer structure built in 1862. The building contains approximately 6,000 finished square feet. If approved, the interior of the existing structure would be modified into a childcare center for students ranging in age from two to five years old between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. Now, new construction is proposed, aside from the installation of some play equipment in the recreation area. Because the subject property lies within the Diamond Hill Historic District, the petitioner was required to seek Historic Preservation Commission approval for the exterior changes to the property prior to this public hearing, and the HBC approved a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed fencing and play area on October 16th, 2023. The impact of the childcare facility should be minimal since it's located in an existing structure in the historic neighborhood. There is ample parking located adjacent to the facility. And while the site's recommended for traditional residential uses on our future land use map, the comprehensive plan emphasizes the importance of encouraging public and private investment that supports neighborhood character as it is critical to neighborhood stabilization. The issuance of the CUP does not change the underlying R2 low-medium-density residential district zoning, and if needed, the structure could convert back to residential use at some point in the future. Diamond Hill Baptist Church, located adjacent to the property, is recommended for institutional uses on the future land use map. The creation of a Diamond Hill Neighborhood Plan is also currently underway and is to be adopted as part of the city's comprehensive plan upon completion. Throughout this planning process, during the year 2023, Diamond Hill stakeholders and residents have expressed strong support for the expansion of early childhood care and education opportunities in the neighborhood. The draft recommendations of the plan include supporting Diamond Hill's churches, schools, and community centers as they are the anchoring institutions of this neighborhood, and allow them to expand their services, specifically including early childhood care and education. Planning Division recommends approval of the CUP petition.
Thank you. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? You'll come forward and state your name and also fill in the sheet up there, sign into the sheet.
I did have the opportunity to fill out the sheet earlier.
Oh, good.
My name is Deborah Flood, and I'm the project manager for the Hope Diamond Childcare Center located 805 15th Street. At this time, we're very pleased regarding the results that we have gotten to in preparation for this center based on the high demand and children who are currently on the waiting list for childcare center. So in that respect, I'm going to allow my pastor, and then we have Lynn Cag Stanley, if they would speak on behalf of this project as well.
Okay.
I'm Owen Cardwell, pastor of Diamond Hill Baptist Church. Thank you for allowing us to make this presentation today. We're told that there are some, there's need for some 2,000 slots for childcare here in the city. Affordable childcare is a very critical issue here. And as we worked along with the planning district on the Diamond Hill plan, it became very clear that the need was particularly high in the Diamond Hill, White Rock Hill area. And so we don't believe in reinventing the wheel, so we reached out to Lynn Cag's Head Start to partner with us in this, in this project. They have children that are on the waiting list, and we look forward to a long and productive partnership in providing a service for the Diamond Hill community. Stanley Cobb's from Head Start is here to speak also for the project.
Did you have a chance to sign in?
He did.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm Stanley Cobb, and I've also signed in.
Great.
I am with Lynchburg Community Action Group, our Head Start program there, and what we are finding in this region, there are a lot of kids that are not able to be served. So we've had several meetings with Dr. Caldwell. They had some space. We have some children that are on wait lists, so we talked and have discussed, you know, potential partnership of they are providing some space, we can get these kids moving off of the wait list, which will, again, give them a greater chance at a formidable life of education because right now what we are seeing, especially with, as they're calling the COVID babies, a lot of these children now, they're falling behind, they're struggling, and it's even worse if they are on one of these waiting lists, and there's some of these lists, I've talked to several people, some people have listed children on wait lists to 2025. That's how many kids right now, and there are two more centers set to close by the end of this year in this county. So it's just that this desert is getting bigger and bigger. So I'm excited to be working with Dr. Caldwell about this project, and hopefully, you know, we can get this thing moving and get some of these kids off the waiting list and put them actually in some seats where they can be under a curriculum and get some learning and, you know, then even on the other side, we've learned, a lot of the kids in this county, some children don't have three meals a day. At least this way, they can come to school, they can get three meals a day, they are socializing with their peers, they are being educated, so it's just an exciting time. So I'm just hopeful that everything will go the way that we need it to go, and that's what we have to offer from Lynn Cag.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I was wondering, did you have any particular questions at this point that you wanted to ask while we were still up here?
We, well, we have to go through our
Okay, your process.
Yeah, our process, but we definitely might have some more questions, so we might call you back up.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, then, at this point, the public hearing is closed, and I will open it up to questions.
Just a question related to the fencing that looks like needs to be installed. Can you speak to what you're planning there?
So they, I'll add to what they're coming up to say as well. So the HBC reviewed the, I believe it's a black aluminum fence. There is already fencing on two sides, so the new fencing is going to go in the front to connect, make a complete enclosure, but that was approved by HPC.
Yeah, like she said, it's a black
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
Melvin Ray.
Okay, great, thank you, Melvin.
I worked on the fencing for this project, like she said, this fencing already exists on the property, but it's none along the front of it. So we got quotes to install the aluminum, black-type fencing to go about 162 feet across the front of that, and we will have two four-foot gates, one to allow entrance for persons, and if you have to have residential or car, truck, something to come in, the other four-foot gate will open up to give you access in case you need to bring in cars or trucks or whatever. Hopefully, we won't need that.
So the fence will enclose the whole yard, right?
Right, right now, it's fencing on three sides now, so we're going to enclose the front of it, 162 feet of it.
I wondered about that because you've got it around the back of the house, but then I couldn't figure out why, so that connects to something else, I guess.
There is a, I don't know what you call it, there's sort of a drain, a drainage around the basement, around the back. We saw it on site with Dr. Cardwell, where it drops down, so I think they're fencing that to eliminate that as a hazard for the kids.
I see.
We did get prices to include that area also with that drain, as you're talking about, yeah, so that is included.
Related to the fencing, you may have said this, or maybe it's in the document, but will it be connected to the building, or will it be just outside of the steps, these stairs here and outside of the driveway?
It's going to be
I'm just, really, what I'm asking is, will there be points of escape, if you will?
I'm thinking security, people getting in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, you got existing fences on this side and this side, so what we're going to do is enclose 162 feet across the front, and it will be completely enclosed, and with the two gates, you have access to in and out.
Is it a four-foot fence, six-foot?
Four-foot, yeah.
So the concern that I had with fencing, actually, he asked, he asked the good question, so I was kind of segue to that, was my concern anytime there's childcare is predators, obviously. Somebody coming in, having access to the kids. A four-foot fence doesn't seem that tough to scale or get over. Is there plans for different kinds of security there? I mean, the kids will always be supervised, I guess, but
The reason for the four-foot fence is the existing fence there now is four feet, and if we need to go higher, I guess we can do that, but that's the reason for the four feet, because it's this and four feet fencing there now. And we're also looking at enclosing it with some shrubbery, a certain height to enclose it also. You said something about predators, so if they can't see through the shrubbery, they will kind of solve that problem also.
Yeah, there's actually requirement in zoning ordinance that in front yards, fences not be taller than four feet due to visibility concerns, especially kind of being on a corner here. That's part of the reason it was four feet.
Is that consistent with the childcare area?
You know, I don't know if there are state
There is no set standard.
There isn't?
Because one thing with fencing and play areas, they're not even required, to be honest. You can look in the state manager, they're not required. The standard says that they have to go outside for an hour, but play areas, they're not, there's not a requirement. But because of where theirs is located, we did talk about putting the fence for security, that way kids won't have access to the road. So a four-foot fence will definitely suffice because actually, they don't even require it.
Yeah, it's not just people getting in, it's kids getting out, obviously.
Right, right.
And so there's no state requirement for the recreation area, but our zoning, our zoning ordinance does have a recreation requirement of a certain area per child to be using it at one time.
Right. I guess in terms of risk mitigation, I mean, you know, not that we can say anything to cameras or anything, but that might be something worth investing in.
As far as the parking goes, the, I'm looking, is it the parking lot that you will be utilizing to, to, for drop-off and pickup? Is that, is that where you'll, is that where you foresee people parking?
The drop-off, we don't anticipate people spending a lot of time in drop-off. Next to this area is a fire station that we also own, and there is, there are a couple of spaces there that parents can pull in to drop off their, their children. And there's, there are opportunities for parking spaces in the front of the building.
So the fire station is that red?
The red roof building right there?
Yes.
So this will be an interior drop-off, right? The parents bring the kids inside to the office and drop them off, or are they going to, is that how it's done?
That's kind of too full right now, because one thing with Head Start right now, our parents are not allowed inside our facility, so they actually come to the door, we are out there, we receive the children, and the children are escorted into the facility.
My thinking is the same as yours, I'm just trying to, it's the security of the kids.
Right.
You know, so I'm just trying to make sure those are lining up.
Yeah, they're not, right now, they're not allowed into the interior of the facility.
Good, because that, because across the street is that rather large apartment building, and so I've been over there many times, and I will say that parking on that street is not easy because a lot of the, the people that live in that apartment building or people that are visiting use that, use the parking that's right in front of the building. So I just was curious, when they said that there's plenty of adjacent parking, they're referring to the front of the building?
When I read that in the report, that's mainly referring to the, the private parking lot they have
In the back.
Directly, yes. But there are on, on-street spaces, of course, that's just going to depend on
Just whether or not it's available.
What's available, yep.
And I think the biggest place where parking would be needed would be for staff because usually the parents drop off between 7 o'clock, 7:30, they're gone. So it may be a little tight in that time, but they usually roll in one after other, and they just pull up, children get out, we accept the children.
They're gone.
Is this preschool only, or do you have an after-school program?
We have an after-school program, but we haven't got to that point in the conversation of talking about one, so no, right now, it's not on the table.
So it's just younger kids under
Yes.
Four and under, I guess.
Two, five.
It's a wonderful program to have.
Comment?
Do you have another comment?
Yeah, I have a comment.
Yeah, comment.
Comment about this. I read through the presentation, and it looks like the facilities are already geared to doing something like this anyway. I like the fact that it's associated with a church on the church campus. This is consistent with the current zoning, as the city's pointed out, with a conditional use permit. I'm not sure we've seen any need for special conditions at this point. The parking looks adequate, the church has plenty of parking, and it's adjacent to what you're proposing here. Looked at the inside of the building, the rooms, looks like there's plenty of space for this number of kids, doesn't look like anything, you know, inadequate going on there. So I, personally, as just a final comment, I can't think of anything more consistent with the character of the community than, than a church and a childcare center. Certainly, they go hand in hand, and in this case, I'll certainly be supporting your proposal.
Any other comments? Okay.
The plan, I like it.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I agree with you fully, Chuck. I think it's a great, great, great use for that building. Obviously, there's a huge need for childcare, and in that neighborhood, I think that it'll just do, do great things, so. Let's, do we have a
I make a motion, we accept it.
Here's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So good luck to you guys. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Okay, the next order of business is to consider the petition of Hunter Dawson to rezone approximately 495 thousandths of an acre located at 602 Taylor Street and 1212 Park Avenue from B4 Urban Commercial District to B5 General Business District to allow the use of the properties as a used car lot.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of Planning Commission. As stated, the subject properties are 602 Taylor Street and 1212 Park Avenue, and the purpose is to rezone from B4 Urban Commercial to B5 General Business to allow the use of the properties for used automobile sales. The properties are included in the area covered by the Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan adopted by City Council on May 23rd, 2006. The properties are recommended for neighborhood commercial uses on our future land use map. The comprehensive plan states that these areas are designed to primarily consist of office, retail, personal service, restaurant-type uses that are scaled and designed to be compatible with and serve their immediate neighborhoods. Patrons should be able to walk, bike, or take a short drive to reach them, and they can be comprised of individual businesses, clusters, or small shopping centers. The Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan was adopted by City Council on May 23rd, 2006. The properties fronting Park Avenue and Fifth Street were included in the scope of that plan. The purpose of the plan was to provide a vision and blueprint for the revitalization of the Fifth Street Corridor between Main Street and the Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Bridge. The primary focus is the area two blocks on either side of Fifth Street, which is included here. The, the surrounding neighborhoods, including College Hill, Garland Hill, and Tinbridge Hill, are also very important to the corridor's character and revitalization. Fifth Street is link, is the link, the link between downtown and the riverfront and the midtown areas of the city, which have both been massive revitalization efforts in recent years. In order for the corridor to succeed, the plan stated that the businesses and, and uses must serve the needs of these, the residents and be an attractive gateway to both downtown and midtown. The properties were rezoned to B6, which was known as the Riverfront Downtown District, now called B4 Urban Commercial District on December 11th, 2007. I believe there may have been a typo in the Planning Commission packet stating it was October 10th. That was actually the Planning Commission recommendation, recommendation date. It was adopted on December 11th, 2007. The rezoning of the Fifth Street Corridor was done following, following the adoption and under the recommendations of that Fifth Street Master Plan. The subject properties consist of approximately 495 thousandths acres at 602 Taylor and 1212 Park. The property at 602 Taylor contains a 12,900 square foot paved area, roughly 1975. The area is enclosed by a chain-link fence with barbed wire at the top, and 1212 Park Avenue contains a 6,898 square foot building constructed in approximately 1900. The concept plan states that no buildings or, no new buildings or additions are proposed. The city engineer noted that any work involving sidewalks or entrances would require a site plan, and that the current entrances do not meet our city access management standards. The subject properties included in this area of the Fifth Street Corridor Master Plan, being that they were part of that and the subsequent rezonings in the area, City Council made a conscious decision to move away from the auto-dominated uses that had initially contributed to the decline of the Fifth Street area. The master plan provides a vision of a revitalized Fifth Street corridor that meets the needs of the surrounding neighborhood. The uses that did not comply with the plan and the B4 zoning at the time were allowed to remain as non-conforming uses. However, it was with the understanding they would eventually be redeveloped to those uses consistent with the, the vision and the desire of the neighborhood as articulated in the plan. There have been significant public and private investments in the area that follow the adoption of the, the master plan. Rezoning the area to B5 may quickly get this site into reuse, however, in the long term, we feel that it may be detrimental to the, the longer-term goals of the plan and the surrounding neighborhoods. Planning staff has concerns that rezoning the property to B5 could set precedence for similar rezonings in the area, which may allow more auto uses back into the corridor, which again, were those same uses that had initially contributed to its decline. The requested B5 General Business District is the most intense of our commercial districts and allows a wide range of uses, including outdoor storage, that are not compatible with the vision of the master plan. And for these reasons, the Planning Division recommends denial of the rezoning petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Who is here to speak on behalf of the petition?
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Amy Syke, AccuPoint Surveying and Design. We've been retained by Mr. Dawson to look at this use for him. You know, Rachel mentioned many of the, the reuses currently, and I'm sure many of you visited the site. Mr. Dawson has purchased both these parcels, has no plans to expand them, would like to make cosmetic improvements to what's there, and then use it as it's currently, it's a car lot, but clean it up to be used for sales. And I, you know, I fully support the, the Fifth Street Corridor. We've actually done lots of work in that corridor. I think that portions of it, as we look at it, you know, some of these have been vacant or are not being kept up, and so we have someone that would like to continue a similar use of what's already there in a fashion, but clean it up. And I would hate for properties to sit just unused and degrade, but understanding what the intent of the corridor is, so we'd just like that taken into consideration, so. And I can answer any questions, once you guys
Sure, thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak on behalf of the petition? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, then I guess the public hearing is closed, and commissioners can ask questions. I had a question, you know, just foreseeing that it was a body and vendor company prior to, so, well, I guess it was sold in 2023, so once it was sold, does that mean that the grandfather issue goes away? Because it was used as an auto business.
So non-conforming uses are allowed to continue, however, if the non-conforming use goes away for two years, it's no longer considered non-conforming. Now, my understanding of this property is, yes, the auto repair, it has been there, however, the individual who sold this property to the current owner could not confirm or have any, they did not have any sort of proof that auto sales were being done there, and I believe the petitioner wants the primary use to be auto sales rather than simply repair. So it has non-conforming status for auto repair, but not auto sales. Did I summarize that right, Amy? Is that what you and Kevin had talked about?
Okay.
And the B5 zoning, that tends to be, the idea is to have that in areas that, that have more intense business activity, like a new car lot or a shopping center, is that right?
Yes, and it does open it, the main concern is, is the auto uses and the outdoor storage component, which the B5 allows and B4 does not. There is a lot of overlap between those two districts. Our, our main concern is really the precedent it could set for future rezonings like this in the corridor, recognizing that it is an auto-oriented use now. We just, we don't want to see further auto uses in the corridor, knowing that they were not good for it in the past.
Can you clarify that?
What's that?
Position on why it wasn't good for that area?
So I think one, one reason was the fact that there were so many, and again, the concern about setting precedent for, for more in the future. But because it's an audio, auto-oriented use, that when you don't get that mix and you are, it's not really a use that serves the neighborhood, I guess is my main concern. And it can, but when you have several, you know, there are, there are more needs to the neighborhood than just auto shops and tire shops and car sales and that sort of thing, so
And the city's intent for this section is to
Is to be that, more of that neighborhood commercial type, and really promote uses that serve the needs of the neighborhood in, in more ways than just, than the auto, the auto uses.
Okay, thanks.
We have plenty of, there's
We have plenty of, there's plenty of other categories as well that fit into that same, same box as well, right? There's plenty like outdoor storage areas, those kind of things. There's places that we've kind of purposely kept out of that, that type of zoning, right? It's not just auto stuff.
Right, the, the B4 was an intentional choice for this, this district because one, the, one of the, one of the other contributing factors to the decline of the Fifth Street Corridor was the parking requirements that were there previously. The B4 corridor doesn't have parking requirements because it is sort of a downtown urban environment, and it was kind of strangling out the uses that could be there. And secondly, yes, it, the B4, the B4 is more oriented towards downtown-type uses. You don't see gas stations and, and car lots in those more urban-type settings. I think it's also important to look at this site's situation between what we have is the water, wastewater, no, not the wastewater, the water treatment plant, the drinking water treatment plant next door, as well as, you know, residential surrounding on the other side. And so while some commercial may be appropriate, more intense uses like it, auto sales may not be. What would make an appropriate transition is, is more of that neighborhood commercial type of use.
Well, I just drove down Fifth Street, you know, coming here, and there, there are plenty of auto buildings and tire stores and of course, you know, the old, what is the, what is that empty building?
Cur tire?
No, no, the one that's next to Fifth and Federal, that was, was like a huge car, it was a car. Yeah, I mean, it was a big car, yeah, it was a dealership. So I, I guess I'm just, I'm struggling a little bit because there's a big car parking lot there. There was past usage of car, you know, it was a car repair place. I don't necessarily see somebody coming down and putting some, you know, nice shopping little areas right there across from the water treatment plant, I, I don't, I mean, or a restaurant, I don't.
You know, I, I live off, off Fifth Street. I live just down the road from there, and frankly, I see a, a number of red flags that would, would cause concern for me as a resident.
To have the auto place?
To have the auto place, yes, a hundred percent. And I, I, you know, I'm familiar with the other auto places that are along that, that street and along Fifth Street, and so I, I do not necessarily see this as the best use for that space. I think that that street and the Fifth Street Corridor frankly hold a lot of promise, might take a minute to get there. And, and honestly, if I'm just looking at the comprehensive plan, word for word here, must serve the needs of the residents to be an attractive gateway to both downtown and midtown. And frankly, that is one of the main corridors to downtown. I, I don't see how this supports that.
I, I would agree, I think, personally, I, I looked at some of the surrounding area and there is some effort to try and revitalize some of the housing down there. It looks to me like an area that really could, a little vision, be revitalized to something fun and neat in downtown. Something like this, it, it seems to express kind of a throwback to what the city made an effort to do away with. So the question is, do we want to shoehorn this back in, you know, and slip it back into where we came from, or not? And I'm sure there's more to it than that, it's more complicated than that, but.
If this were denied, the, the owner or whoever is running the businesses at those two, on those two lots could continue doing what they're doing, right? As long as they don't sell cars, they can continue to repair cars.
I don't think there's a car repair shop there now, it's an empty lot.
Just the one that they're, 1212, I believe is adjacent to a mechanic shop.
Yeah, the one with all the, it's basically a junkyard, I mean, that's what I've always thought it was, but I guess they're just waiting to be repaired or they're never going to be repaired or something.
I don't think there's anything on that lot at this point.
Google shows nothing there.
Yeah, on this there is, but, but when you go by there, I think there might be three cars sitting there.
So is it, is it being used right now, or is it just people park, got cars parked there?
Not being used, okay.
So I, and I appreciate you all's comments, you know, I, I have a, a friend who does development, he's always thinking about stuff downtown, and, you know, he's really looked at some of these places up there at that, up the, up at the top, you know, th- these are auto places right now, he's like, man, these would be great uses. We've seen other people really be creative with what's there, using the framework the city laid out and put, you know, added multi-levels, multiple levels onto other buildings. So I, I agree, I think, you know, this has always been a place, I actually go down Park Avenue quite often in the evening to go home, because, you know, when I go down to Rivermont, because the view's incredible. I've always thought it's a, it's a, it's a real gem, and I, yeah, my thing, my thing is, like, do we step backwards and then will that be for 15 more years? That it ties things up, or do we continue with a, a creative plan on how to continue making change here? So that's my difficulty with it.
Subjectively and selfishly, as a restaurateur who develops restaurants in downtown, I have also looked at these spaces and, and to see what promise they have, and there is a lot of promise there. Especially when we talk about in the comprehensive plan, there's a phrase here, something to the effect of, I'm sorry, just give me one second. Something to the effect of, oh, it's further up. Just give me one second. Oh, compatible and serve their immediate neighborhood. You know, I, I just see so many better opportunities here.
I will make a motion to recommend denial of the plan.
One second.
Okay, all in favor of denying the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. So that, the motion did not pass. Okay, is there any other business?
No, that's Elliot, he's on Fifth Street CDC.
Do we have, Andrew, do we have things on our docket for November the 8th?
Uh, no, that will most likely be canceled for lack of agenda items.
November 8th, the next one, yeah.
And then you don't meet, and there's typically not a second meeting in November.
Just move it to once a month, so we ever meet anywhere.
Or at least we move the meeting close.
You would, yeah, done, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Good job, Kevin.